Welcome. Tonight, we're right in the middle of the silly season. This year, we're very fortunate. We have a number of people who've stepped up and have said, "I'm willing to help the kids of Milford by serving on the school committee." Anybody who's watched the show, if you're one of the six who have watched the show in the past, then you'll know that I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate, but I'll beg you to vote. Get out, become educated on each of the candidates, and then pick the one that you feel will best represent you and what you would like to see in the schools. Because to me, this is the most important position. Anybody who's had a child in high school will know that you're lucky if you get two hours a night with them. The school committee gets to dictate what they do six to eight hours a day. So, please take it serious. Please get out and vote. For anybody who doesn't think their vote is worth it, then I'll bring up the fact that in the past, we've seen elections decided by thirteen and another one under twenty votes. So, please get out and vote. Now, let's start with an introduction.
Al, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is RJ Sheedy, and I am one of the many candidates up for the two positions on Milford School Committee.
RJ, I start the show. I'm old, so I always do things the same way. The same way I finish the show. With a single question. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, I think there's a number of reasons why, Al, you should vote for me. First and foremost, I'm also from Milford. I'm a recent Milford High School graduate, so I'm a lifelong resident of the town, and I'm also a product of the Milford High School and Milford Public School system. Along with that, I have my whole life ahead of me to thank for, thank to the Milford Public School Systems. I am in my career path of communication for one reason, and that's because of the Milford High School education and the video production program at the school. Thanks to the video production program at the school, I was really able to find what I wanted to do with my life. I really found what I was passionate about. And through there, I got to meet Milford TV, and I was able to host a television talk show on here for many, many years, where I got to interview community members, business leaders, people of interest, and just have really built a network of people that I can call on for anything. On top of that, the whole way that I got introduced with Milford TV was that I filmed the school committee meetings for a year and a half with them as a high school senior student. So, as a high school student, I really learned all the functions of the committee, what their roles and responsibilities are, and really just how they impact the lives of the students and everybody involved with the building every day. So, I'm running for the position because I feel like I am knowledgeable. I feel like I know the process, and I feel like I have a lot to add to the table as being a former student who can actually make decisions through a lens of a student having just experienced that experience that many of our students are going through right now.
So, let's start with the fundamental question, because we've had multiple responses that are diametrically opposed. Do kids get a good education at Milford?
Oh, absolutely, they do. Absolutely, they get a good education. I think I and everybody who lives in Milford who went through that school system is an example of what a great education you get there. It has prepared, at least me personally, has prepared me well for life, I think. It has given me an avenue to go to college and pursue a career in something that I was really, really passionate in. And the school was able to give me a coursework of load with the video production program, really find what I was passionate about. There is situations where kids are not finding their passion, and they're leaving high school either entering the job market or just not doing anything with their degree at that point. And so, I feel like there is a population that we're not properly serving, and we can always do better as a school system to meet their needs and to educate them the best we can. Because really, it's about the students. It's about giving them the best education experience possible.
What population are we missing on?
You know, you know, I'm not sure. There's a lot of places where we can put the blame on, I guess. I think one area that really needs improvement on at our school systems is our ELL classes. Milford has gone through a growth of our ELL populations within the past ten years. Ten years ago, there was seventeen percent of our students speaking a different language at home. Today, there is over a third of our students speaking a different language at home. That population is rising. It's growing, and it's really showing no signs of stopping its growth anytime soon. And for me, as a Milfordian, I'm really proud of that. I'm proud that families are moving to this country and are deciding that Milford is their home. After all, Milford has a proud history of immigrants. We have the Italians who came to town, the Irish, the Portuguese, such as you and your family, the Brazilians. And throughout time, they've all just been able to amass into what Milford is. So, I feel that we have responsibility to, one, probably educate these students, and, two, make them a part of our community. So, you know, if you want to talk about test scores, we can, we can put the blame on them, but I don't think the blame is to be on them. I think there is actually a disconnect on the skills they have and what we're asking them to be tested on. One area of the MCAS math that I think is troublesome for our ELL population is the word problems. You and me can be presented a math word problem that has a scenario of a basketball court, and the court is this long, and the basketball hoop is this tall, and we have to draw it out and, you know, do a whole geometry problem with it. While I feel like many ELL students may get that problem presented, and they don't have this life skill of, oh, this is what a basketball is. This is how the game works. This is how our court works. So, it's really challenging to expect them to answer that question. On top of that, Al, if I was to move to China tomorrow, and I enrolled in a public school in China, and I was told, "Okay, you gotta take this test today. Now, this is the day, this is the one day..."
In Mandarin.
"In Mandarin." How am I supposed to understand anything? How am I supposed to get a high score on that test? So, you know, I feel like there's always more that we can do, and I think that's one section of our population where we can better put our focus on as a school department and a school district.
But now, you brought up test scores.
Yeah.
And Milford's always been criticized for having lower test scores than everybody around them. Do you think that's a real problem?
I don't think it's a real problem, and I'll tell you why. If we look at Milford's top students, they are doing as good, if not better, as the surrounding community's top students. So, I think our students are very smart. I think they can achieve a lot, and I really believe in them because that's our future. That's the future of our town. That's coming right out of our school systems. I think we do have a high population in Milford. I was with Nancy Angelini at Stacy the other day, and she told me that she has over three hundred and seventy kids in one grade. That's a huge population. And I think when we look at the towns around us, they have a smaller population than us, more often than not. The Hope Dales, the Uptons, the Mendon of the towns, they have a smaller population than us. So, I'm not, this may not be true, but perhaps the fact that we have a larger population is affecting the reason why we have more kids that are scoring low. But if you look at our top kids, our top kids are doing just as good as everybody else in the surrounding towns.
Now, it's interesting, because when you talk about Stacy, now that includes eighth grade.
Yes.
Eighth grade was always three fifty, three sixty, and then it drops down.
It does, it does.
Because kids are going off to BVT and private schools. So, in a way, aren't we siphoning off a lot of the top kids into other schools by the time they get to high school?
Perhaps, perhaps. BVT, over the last few years, I think, has decided to take on kids. Because in the past, BVT was a destination school for kids who weren't gonna go to college, and they wanted a trade, a job after high school to enter. And I think what we're seeing right now, specifically with BVT, is that that's not that school anymore. BVT, in the last few years, have been sending about sixteen percent of their kids to the workforce. Milford Public Schools, on the other hand, at graduation, they're sending twenty-seven percent of their kids to the workforce. That's a little bit of a strange scenario for me, because we have this beautiful tech school that we're sending a bunch of kids to, to say, "Go get a job. Go find a career after high school." And yet, now, we're just turning them over to colleges? Shouldn't that be the other way around? So, that is true. That is true. I think some of our best kids are going other places, but we still have a bunch of fantastically performing students in the high school.
When I grew up, you're eighth grade, you made your decision. Back then, that was Stacy, because it was only seven and eight. If you were going to college, you went to Milford High. If you wanted to pursue a trade, you went to BVT. And today, I worry, because, you know, I think of people like my dad, who put him in organic chemistry. He would not have done well. Academically, he was not a star. But give him a tool, and he was an artist.
I think the school department is starting to recognize that need again in the system. Over the past few years, they've introduced a lot of great programs to basically help students get into the job market afterwards. When I was leaving Milford High School, they were just introducing the Hotel Hospitality Management Program that they have. You know, a group of students enroll to work in the DoubleTree Hotel in Milford. They learn the food service. They learn the concierge service, customer servicing, and they learn the housekeeping. A little bit of everything in the hotel. That way, if they don't choose to go to college, they can have a pathway to a job afterwards. They've also added programs like the Building Trades Program. If you go on Twitter, Jeremy Foster, the video production teacher there, he's got a beautiful new doghouse from the Building Trades classes. You know, his dog gets livid now. It's fantastic. They're basically building houses, Al. And they also have the Business and Banking Program. So, I think Milford Public Schools is recognizing that there is a need to educate our kids, not just for college, but for life skills. I think too many kids are leaving the Milford Public School Systems without those life skills, and I feel like we need to continue to bring stuff like that back into the curriculum for them.
You're in college.
I am, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Al.
When you came into your senior year, you've got to, quote, "pick the college you're gonna go to."
Yes.
But a lot of times, you're hoping they pick you.
Some students, yeah, some students.
How hard was it for you, coming out of Milford High, to get into the colleges you wanted?
I'm gonna tell you, Al. I had a great support system in high school who really pushed me to go to college. I wasn't even sure if I wanted to go to college. Here was, you know, crazy RJ's TV dream. "I'm gonna do a show here on TV. I'm gonna put it on YouTube, and I'm just gonna get fine. Someone's gonna pick me up and take me to a job." A lot of people sat me down and said, "That's not how that's gonna work. You gotta go to college. You gotta put the work in, and if you wanna do this, that's what you gotta do." So, I had a really great support system on, you know, coaching me and helping me apply and find really where I wanted to go, and I ended up at Western State University. And what was the original question?
How hard was it for you to get into colleges?
I don't think it was very hard, honestly. I mean, as someone whose family has experienced the enrollment process in college before, I had a lot of people who were helping me. I think what we're seeing now with the new population that's entering, that's entering the Milford Public School Systems, they don't have the same support that I had, that wanted to encourage me and help me get there. A lot of these people have never applied to a college before, and perhaps that's another reason why we're seeing a lot more people enter the workforce in Milford Public Schools versus BBT. So, at least personally for me, I had a very pleasant experience with applying for college and finding success and finding a place that I'm happy to call my school. But I know that opportunity is not there for everybody.
But now, is it that the colleges don't recognize Milford as a top school, or why?
Well, I think Milford students are getting into some of the top universities around. They're getting into, they're being accepted into Harvard, UMass Amherst, and Brown, you know. I think, I don't think there's, I mean, I think Milford Public School is a good system, and I think the colleges also agree, because we're seeing some of our students getting to some of the top universities around.
Now, one of our candidates brought up the fact that he believes at least half of the kids are failing college that leave Milford High.
I have not seen that number, but that is certainly something that I'm gonna research when I get home.
But I mean, wouldn't you know if half the kids you went to school with?
I mean, I would, I would. I mean, a lot of kids that I do know, I will tell you this. Finishing college in four years, that's very hard to do today. I know a lot of kids who, you know, are still in school, just like me. So, you know, perhaps there are some kids that, you know, go get into college, and then afterwards, they decide, "This isn't for me. I can't afford it. I can't continue on this path." You know, whatever personal decision they make, and they decide to, you know, to end it. You know, I would have to look more into whether or not, how successful our students are once they get into college, and what happens after that.
But if you're friends, if you take...
The sample of my friends, the sample of my friends, all that who are in school, they have stayed there, and they are basically really passionate about finishing and getting that degree. A lot of us who are still there after four years say, "We're here for four years. What's one more year gonna do? Let me just stay here one more year and get my degree." Because that degree is such an opportunity. It's such a door opener for many people.
Well, it's gotta be an interesting choice, because of the price of school today.
Yeah, it's crazy expensive. It's crazy expensive. And I feel like we're just asking our students and families just too much when it comes to paying, when it comes to having to take out giant loans, you know. I'm looking at a lifetime ahead of me where I'm just paying off student loans. And, you know, that's really sad. And I feel like that's the boat that a lot of other students are in right now.
Well, I remember my senior year at Holy Cross.
Yes.
When Paul Revere and I went there, it was sixty-two hundred all-in. And I kept, I was amazed that my parents, you know, Mom worked at Draper's
Yeah.
as a drill press operator. My dad worked at General Motors. And how they came up with six grand a year, it just stunned me.
That's crazy.
And now, all of a sudden, you know, when Emily graduated, it was five grand a month. Which, I mean, I don't envy anybody trying to carry that kind of debt load when they graduate. You know, but even the state schools aren't cheap anymore.
Yeah, with me, I was just staying with all my student loans and grants and scholarships that I get. We still get a bill of like anywhere from like eight hundred to two hundred, depending on how much I've taken on that year. So, even when you're getting help, it's still not enough, and you end up with a balance at the end of the day.
Now, if you look at the school, where we are today with the school system, what do you think the three biggest challenges we're gonna face are?
So, I think I already addressed one of the three biggest challenges, which is addressing our ELL population. Specifically with Milford Public Schools, we're enrolling one new ELL student a day. We're enrolling one new ELL student a week. I'm sorry, a week. That was wrong. A week, it's a week. One new ELL student a week is coming into our school systems. So, like I said, that population is growing, and we need to address their needs. Perhaps we would need more funding for additional resources and teachers for them, because, you know, if you're gonna learn English, I think you need a small class setting for that. And just walking around Stacy the other day with Nancy Angelini, she showed me the seventh grade ELL room at the top of their, at the top of their school. And there is not room in there for one more desk. If they get another student in there, the kid's gonna have to sit on the teacher's desk. There's literally a space problem in our schools. So, I feel like we need to better, we need to give them more resources to do the job of teaching the kids. Our second biggest problem that we're facing, I think, is that we're too busy teaching the tests and not to life skills. We were just talking about, you know, low test scores and how too many kids are leaving high school without those life skills. And I think that's because too many, too oftentimes, our educators are more focused on making sure these kids pass the test versus actually giving them life skills. I can tell you with me, in middle school, one of my biggest weaknesses was math. Math was a huge weakness of mine. And the school put so much effort into me passing that test that that was my time of school in the day. We have one free period of the day where we get to like take an elective or whatever in Stacy. That free period for me was math. So, I feel like we're taking too many opportunities away from our students by making sure that they can pass the test and that they can do good on a test. So, I feel like we need to better teach to tests and, or better teach to life skills versus teaching the test.
Now, I mean, realistically, though...
Realistically, we're really stuck with the test, because at the end of the day, the state mandates it, and our school ranking really depends on our kids doing good. So, there is, there has to be some kind of fine line where we can give our kids life skills, project-based learning experiences, while also making sure they're doing good on a test to, you know. Because also, I don't know if a lot of your audience knows this, but in order to graduate Milford High School, you have to pass the MCAS.
Really?
Yeah, that's a graduation requirement now. Luckily, in the English, in the English part of it, every single kid last year passed it in Milford. Every kid passed it last year in Milford for the English. So, that's a huge positive that I don't think is being talked about enough. That's something that Kevin McIntyre brought up at the beginning of January in a forum that he was hosting at the high school.
Yeah, it's interesting, because when I first got to, well, West Street, back then, there was a West Street School, there were no ELL classes. You know, and kids like me that came out of the Heights, a lot of us, we didn't speak English.
Yeah.
We didn't know what this funny language was everybody was talking about. But we somehow seemed to assimilate.
You picked it up. You did assimilate. One thing that the sciences of education is kind of telling us right now is that the younger you are, the more equipped your brain is to learn and absorb and learn a new language. And when I see something like that, it's kind of disheartening to me that the Milford Public Schools does not offer foreign languages in the middle school levels and in the elementary school levels. I am one person who I can say I'm very proud of the foreign language programs that we have at the high school. We offer four different languages at the high school, Italian, Spanish, Portuguese, and French. We have a foreign exchange student program where we get to take in French students and Italian students and Portuguese students and bring them to Milford and have them, you know, assimilate in our culture and bring their language and, you know, life skills here. And then we get to send our own students over there. And, you know, that's fantastic that we offer that, but I feel like, again, we could always do more as a school system. And I think one of the places where we can do more is by introducing foreign language back into the elementary and the middle schools.
But now, that costs money.
It does cost money. It does cost money.
So, where do you find the money to replace, you know, the classes with?
To replace the classes?
Well, you've got a fixed number of teachers.
Right.
You'd have to take some classes offline.
I don't, I mean, you might have to. That's one approach to it, which is, you know, for everything we add, we cut one thing. That's one approach to it. Another approach is basically just going out there and buying the money. I think we, as a school committee, can put pressure on our state legislators to basically go out and go after grants. I'm sure there are grants and grant programs that basically fund foreign language in elementary schools that the state and, that the school committee can push our state legislators off to go get. We could always find other avenues to save the school department money. One way that I've been thinking about saving the school department money, which, you know, it will be a huge challenge to come, but I think we can begin this discussion, is including solar power to our schools. Utilities go up, what, three, you know, you know the budget more than me. Three percent every year or so?
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky, it goes about three percent every year. Now, imagine if we just powered our own electricity for the schools through, you know, carports over the parking lots or, you know, whatever we decide would be the right avenue to go on this. We could be saving so much money in utilities that we could literally just be putting that money back into our school systems and giving it back to our students. You know, that is a huge project, a huge undertaking that could be years ahead of us. But if you look around at surrounding communities, we're already seeing that surrounding communities are introducing solar to their school system. If you go up the road to Mendon, Upton, I don't remember which elementary school it is, but there's an elementary school up there that literally has carports that has the solar panels sitting on top, on top of the, on top of the parking lots. Right, right. And that's how the school is really getting its power. I think Woodland has some solar panels that it's utilizing, and I think that's fantastic. I think if we wanna look at saving some money in the budget, that could be one avenue of discussion where we can go down.
So, now, you talk about buildings. How are our buildings?
You know, I think there's a lot that we can do when it comes to maintenance of those buildings. You know, fresh coats of paint, fixing some leaks in the ceiling, some holes in the walls. Overall, you know, I think the biggest weak point of the Milford Public School Systems at one point was Middle School East. Now that that's offline, I think all of our buildings really, really are pretty, you know, they're there, they're there, and they're, and, you know. Obviously, there's always more that we can do, but I think there's only so much we can do as a town. I don't think it's, I don't think we can afford a new school, so I don't think that should be a part of the discussion, obviously. Again, we're many, many, many years away from that. But I think that there's always things that we can do to improve upon the appearance of our schools if we think that there is an appearance problem.
What's the next school you think we should address?
Ooh, well, we just did Woodland, and then Stacy had some work done prior to it. Then we also renovated Brookside in like, what, the mid-two thousands or so, so... Either the High School Memorial, I guess. I guess just by elimination, it either be the High School Memorial. I couldn't tell you which one it would be, but just by the process of elimination on what I don't think has had work done to it, it would be one of those schools, maybe.
Yeah, we've been talking about six to eight years from now, high school's gonna need some work.
Sure. I've heard those discussions, yeah.
Do you think we need a new high school, or is renovating it more along the lines?
I think when we talk about needing a new school, we're gonna have to talk about space again. Because if we shut the school down, where are we gonna put all of our high school students? We can't, I don't wanna see our high school students mingling with like the elementary school students. I don't want them corrupting them. And obviously, you know, I don't think, I think there's a space issue at State, so I don't think we can put them there. So, maybe renovation would be a better avenue to go down, renovating each wing by wing as we go. But, you know, I think those discussions should be made with the school committee as a whole. I'm not gonna walk into Kevin McIntyre's office one day and say, "Okay, this is what we're gonna do." It's not up to me. It's not up to RJ Sheedy. It's up to the school committee and the school community as a whole as to what we do.
Yeah, I'd be hard-pressed. One high school our size to replicate would be two-hundred million dollars.
Oh, wow. Yeah, we can't afford that. We can't do that.
I mean, even to refurb it, you know, I think about the high school. It's like a bunker.
Yeah.
I mean, the walls, you don't see walls falling in or anything like that. For half that money or less, I can see us updating the school. And we haven't, we haven't really added any square footage to that high school since seventy-four. You know, you think about it. Seventy-four graduated two-hundred-twenty-two kids.
Right.
I remember, it was my class.
Yes, you were the first class to graduate from there.
Last year, we graduated two-sixty. So, we've only added one kid per year, but the demands on it, I mean, what we do for sped, what we do for ELL.
There's so many more things that we have to think about now that we didn't think about, you know, from those years ago.
Fundamental question. Do we spend enough on our education for the children?
I think our teachers and educators are doing as much as they can with what we have. I do know that, I believe we, as Milford, spend twenty percent less than the state average per pupil spending. You know, people have a bunch of different opinions on that. My specific opinion is that I think we should maybe be doing more, perhaps. I don't think that we're spending twenty percent less per pupil than the state average is something that I would celebrate. Perhaps fifteen or ten percent below the state average is a more reasonable number to celebrate, but I don't, you know. When we look at the surrounding towns, I feel like they spend more per student. And if we look at those surrounding towns, you know. I think we could be spending more per pupil, basically. That's my point. My point is I think we could be doing more.
Yeah, and I struggle, because I hear that the state average is fifteen thousand and change, and we're spending less. Yet, I look at what we spend, and all-in, we're in sixty-odd million dollars for the schools. Forty-some of their normal budget, and then you add in the healthcare.
Yeah, and that goes up every year, too. That's a huge expense.
And then you add in the bonds for the buildings. And then you add in the bonds for the buildings.
Yep.
And if you add in all the pieces like the parks department, a lot of the money we spend on parks are school.
Sure.
Uh, highway, Scotty plows and keeps the parking lots clear.
Yeah.
So, I really have a hard time understanding how we can be three thousand dollars under the state when I take sixty and divide it by the forty, you know, four thousand some kids we have. Sure feels like still we're at fifteen thousand ahead, so I don't know. You know, I, I really, I struggle, but how do you answer the question? It'd be great to do more for the kids, but aren't you increasing taxes then on our seniors?
I, we, I, you know, I don't wanna increase taxes. I hear you on your show all the time talking about overrides and, you know, that is not something that I would wanna go down to front our schools. We do an override, that's a tax increase forever on our residents. We don't wanna be doing that to them and to undo that, we'd need an underwrite and that's a huge, whole nother headache, 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 headache afterwards. So, you know, I don't wanna even go down that avenue. So, um, again, I think there are certain grants and state aid that we can have our local legislators go off and get for us. Um, I don't think the whole burden should fall on us as Milford as a community. I think the state should be paying its fair share for our kids' education as well as we should be.
That'd be wonderful, cause I look in, state gives us about forty-seven percent of the cost of educating kids. And then I look and read that places like Springfield, Lawrence, they're paying eighty to ninety percent of their burden.
Sure, that doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, but what do we do to change it? Is there anything we can do?
As a school committee, I don't think so. I think as a school committee, we can ask our state legislators to start looking into it. Um, I've heard some people talk about, um, updating the chapter seventy formula, which hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety-two. And, you know, that's one element to go down on it. The chapter seventy doesn't take into account on the rising prices of healthcare, the rising cost of educating sped and ELL students. So, you know, maybe a lot of the problems that Milford has with funding in our schools could be solved with updating this formula. But again, that's a huge challenge and undertaking for a state legislator to go at, to, to, to take. So, you know, I think there's many discussions to be had, but, you know, Milford should be getting more from the state for our schools.
One of the hot topics that keeps coming up is school choice. That years ago, we were actually in a positive position. And for people who don't know, school choice out gets paid for by the town.
Yes.
School choice in goes into the school budget. But, you know, when you look and you say, okay, you can't say no to school choice out. You know, people say, just don't let kids go.
You have to, the state says you have to. It's, again, it's a challenge that we just have to deal with, cause that's the law.
Why are so many people leaving the Milford school system?
You know, I don't know and I don't have the answer for that. I can only tell you that the Milford Public Schools is, in my eyes, is great. I think they do a lot to market themselves and highlight the positives of them. They, you know, Kevin McIntyre comes on here, Milford TV to do his things, students and faculty members go on the radio and they do newspaper ads to highlight all the positives that our students are achieving and that the schools are doing. There, I feel like there's a lot that the school department's doing to market themselves and show all of its strengths as a district. And I think at the end of the day, if someone wants to leave the town, you know, it's a shame that they have to make that decision, but at the end of the day, that decision's up to, I think, the parents and what they think is best for the kids. Um, I think the role of the school department to counteract, that is basically, you know, present them why Milford Public School is good. Let them know what our positives are and what we think, and why we think we are a better suit for your child's education than the other, than the other schools. And if we make that argument and they still decide to go someplace else, I think we as a school department, the school committee has done our job to try and keep that kid there. And at that point, I think we should just focus on the kids that we do have in our schools and that we do have to educate because, you know, it's their choice really.
We hear from some of the parents who are leaving that they don't wanna say it point blank.
Oh, tell me.
But they're concerned that the ELL students will bring down the quality of education that their children gets. In your mind, fact or fiction?
I have had, I have heard administrators say that, um, there is a certain demographic that is leaving Milford more than others. And I do think that is a factor that plays in with families as to when they decide to leave. I don't, I disagree with that. I think that if you want your child to have a robust, you know, good educational experience, you want them to be assimilated themselves with, you know, people of other backgrounds, of different diversities and of different, you know, culture and history and stories behind them. I go, like I said, I go to school in Worcester and Worcester looks a lot different than Milford. But just by being a Milford Public Schools and like, you know, knowing that there is a diverse population out there, I knew a little bit about their cultures and a little bit about their language and, you know, stuff like that. So I was able to more assimilate myself better in that city than I would have been if I went to another school system. So, honestly, I think the fact that we have a high ELL population and a high, you know, percentage of people who speak a different language at home, I think that's only a positive for our district and I wish more people would celebrate that.
Now, we've had people come on town meeting floor and talk about the fact that when we put in all these programs for sped and ELL, that we're actually attracting people to Milford to take advantage of the sped programs. I know my opinion and how I answered it, but what would you say to somebody? Says the more you put into sped programs and ELL, the more you're gonna draw people who need those services.
If that is a avenue that I, that families feel is lacking in their district, then I would welcome those students, honestly.
See, that's always been, you know, where I've said, if on the way to helping our Milford kids, we help some other kids.
That's fantastic.
Exactly.
That's great, why wouldn't we, listen, we're a community. No matter if you're from Milford or not, you know, I think we should be open arms and just take whoever wants to be here. Obviously, you know, at some, you know, we should, we should have open arms and just take people who wanna take advantage of our special education services, our ELL services, if they wanna come here because we have a fantastic music department. There's many more reasons why I think a kid should be in Milford schools rather than just we have a strong ELL program and a strong special education program. If that's what draws them here, fantastic, let's, let's find better ways to market that and improve upon those programs that people are coming here to take advantage of.
Now, when we look at overall Milford and you start saying, one of the things that we haven't had to deal with terribly is security. But, how did you feel as a Milford high student as far as security in the buildings?
So, I as a student always felt safe. I never went to school with a worry that something was gonna happen or, you know. Even when I go to school in Worcester State, I, you know, you see images on TV all the time about, you know, another incident here, another incident there, and, you know, I go to school, just, I'm fine. Maybe that's just because, you know, I feel very safe in my environment and the schools that I've gone to has done a fantastic job at creating that positive, safe feeling environment for all students. But, you know, also when I look at Milford High School and all the other schools in the district, I think it's safe. When I've gone there to, you know, meet administration, to tour the buildings, I gotta buzz in, I gotta sign in, I gotta ask, you know, what are you doing here, you know, who you seeing? You know, I think we're doing a fantastic job at keeping our students safe.
Now, Milford put in recently its own SWAT team.
Sure.
How do you feel about that?
You know, that, I think that was, that was a town decision and I think that's definitely one way to keep our children safe. And I'm really glad that the police department's budget was able to pay for that.
Well, we had to add seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was a lot of money. Um, I can't speak as to whether or not that, that program is effective or not, but I, but I'm, but I, I'm glad that we have that there just in case something happens.
That was the problem. I remember while they were being presented, while they were presenting the idea of a SWAT team, our chairman and I looked at each other and said, God help us if we don't support this and something happens.
Sure.
You know, I mean, you think of Parkland, you think of some of these places that suffered from animals hurting their children. And I have no passion to call those people human, anybody that would hurt a child. But, the regional SWAT team we were part of, we were told that they can make it to Milford in force in under forty minutes. And then you find out that almost every, um, incident is done in under eighteen minutes. So it was a scary movie to sit there and say, okay, so you're gonna have this overwhelming force show up.
With nothing there, yeah.
Twenty minutes. So, you know, in a way, I hate to spend the money. And I can see people saying they don't like the idea of armed guards or armed policemen walking through the halls.
Yeah, I don't like that idea either, but I don't think, I mean, every school I believe has a resource officer in them. I wouldn't, personally, if I went to a school that had metal detectors and SWAT officers walking around, you know, ready, you know, geared up and everything, I don't think that would be a safe environment. For me as a student, if I'm walking in school and I'm seeing metal detectors and, you know, armed guards everywhere, that is not a safe environment, that's conducive to learning, I feel. I think what we're doing right now is fantastic though. We could always find ways to improve upon ourselves, like I'm saying, you know. The whole job of the school committee is basically just improve upon the school, the school as a whole. And, you know, we can always find ways to improve.
Now, when you look at improving, how does Milford's offerings compare to the towns around us as far as academic offerings and?
Let me tell you one thing that I'm seeing in a lot of other towns that I don't see here in Milford. Um, Milford does a great job at giving their students opportunities to stay after school for extracurriculars, to receive one-on-one help. Milford offers over one hundred extracurricular activities to its students. And Stacy just introduced a program where if you didn't make it to, you know, meeting your target for an MCAS math, they have an after-school program that students are in now until the test, basically just beef up some of those math skills they may be weakened on. We're giving our students so many opportunities to stay after and to, you know, build and grow on themselves. But, we're not offering them transportation home. If we look at surrounding towns like Framingham or Holliston, they offer their students a late bus, you know. Dismissals at twelve fifteen, there's a twelve fifteen bus that picks up the students, takes them home. Students stay after for an hour or so, another bus comes around at three fifteen, three thirty to bring them all home. Um, Milford's a town of working families. A lot of people have parents who work two jobs, one person, one, one, one parent doesn't get out till four, one parent doesn't get out till six. And, you know, transportation can be a huge burden for a lot of families. And I think that by having a late bus, we can do a lot with it. We can, I, I can see only opportunities of growth for our students if we gave that opportunity to them.
Can we use the shuttle bus? I mean, we've got this bus service that we're paying a quarter million dollars for.
The town bus you're talking about?
The town bus.
So I looked at that, the, the, the drop-off schedule for that town bus and I don't think it is the best option to give our students. Most of its route, yes, it does have a stop at the high school. A lot of its other stops are retail plazas, medical buildings, and basically just places for you to do your business at. Um, they will still, I think, be a considerable amount of walking home for many students if they were to take that. I feel like, if we wanna talk about safety, I feel like, you know, just having a kid walk around at four thirty at night with, when the clocks just change and it's dark out, I don't think that's safe for them. I don't think that's a safe way for them to get home. So as a district, I feel like we need to provide that safe transportation for them home.
How do you do that? Where, again, it all comes down to the funding.
Sure.
Where do you get the funding to do that?
I think the money's out there, I really think the money's out there that we can get.
How do you think chapter seventy's gonna turn this year? Any gut feels?
Well, you know, I feel like people are talking about it. And having talk about it is always great because if legislators are doing their job and keeping their ears to the ground, they're gonna hear what their constituents and the people that they're representing are talking about and what their concerns are. I am hopeful for something to happen, but if past years have gave us any indication, it won't happen.
Yeah, somehow Milford always comes up on the short end of that stick.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I guess in a way, it's, it's a blessing that financially we're strong.
Yeah, yeah, no, the town, we, we say at town meeting together, I'm really proud to be a town meeting member and I've never missed a meeting, so every meeting we, we listen to the finance director go up and say, look at how great we're doing, look how much money we have in the bank for a rainy day. Towns around us, they do not have that, 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 that reserve there just in case. You know, Chris talks about, um, Chris Moran, Chris Moran, right? Yeah, thanks, uh, Chris Moran talks about, um, how other towns are like, oh, you have this much, okay, no, 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 million, we got million in the bank. And they're like, oh, okay. So, Milford really is fortunate, we are.
But we pay for it because then when they do the formulas, they say we don't need as, as much money.
Yeah, they do that.
I guess better to be that way, it's like, I'm paying a lot of taxes. Well, that's good news, cause it means you're making a lot of money. You know, as a town, we're still doing well. It's getting tighter and tighter every year.
Sure.
You know. How do you see the school committee affecting participation by the immigrant families? How do we get more of those families to participate in our schools?
I think we just need to give them the opportunity. Um, I think there are certain events and, and, and presentations that can be put on that are basically tailored to this audience. You know, I remember hearing you on your show all the time talk about, you know, your dad and how he was involved in your education. And, um, you know, there are a lot of parents who, you know, just, you know, put on the coat and the hat when they have to go to school and talk about, you know, their kid or whatever. And, you know, that's great that you're doing that, but I always feel like you should be investing in your kid's education. And, um, you know, I think there's a lot of ways that we can do more, assimilate them into the community.
Yeah, and that's always the tough part because, I mean, I bet, I didn't speak any English when I went to school, but my parents really didn't speak much English. You know, my father would show up at every event that he was told, you should be there to support your son.
And he went, and that was his job, yeah.
You know, and he'll never know how important it was when I looked out to see him there.
Yeah.
Knowing that he cared enough. But I'd love to see more participation.
Yeah, I will tell you one thing that I was really impressed by, um, I went to a CPAC meeting this Wednesday at Woodland Elementary School.
A what?
A CPAC, it's a Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um, they were talking about, um, um, Milford High School's building and intervention programs. Before the meeting started, somebody walked in and said, hi, I'm the Spanish-speaking translator. And they're like, okay, go ahead and sit down. And then shortly after, um, somebody who spoke Spanish entered the room and, you know, she was able to be there and, you know. If she had a question about what was going on, she'd be like, well, I don't know. And so like, you know, I feel like that's a great thing that we can do. We can offer parents translators for when they have to show up to school for meetings or presentations and stuff like that. Um, so I think that's one way that we can support those families is by just offering them a translator.
Now, the school committee itself, you know, we hear every, three years from every candidate that they're gonna be more open, more transparent. How do we get more parents to reach out to the school committee members?
I think some of it has to be education. When I was, when I was, when I was in high school, I didn't know what a school committee was until I filmed them. I didn't know that there was a group of people who were dictating what happens at the schools and what hap, and, and what the students do and how their days spent. I didn't know that. So, for me, just being at those meetings and filming them as a student, it was an educational experience about how the system works. I think a lot of parents don't know exactly how that works. And I think there's a lot of ways that the school committee can better communicate with those families. Um, one way could possibly be a newsletter that we send to families every, you know, month and say, hey, this is what happened at a meeting, this is what we're working on, please give us your input on what you think should happen. Because I think another avenue with this is that we don't hear from parents. We hear from parents that are unhappy about what's happening. And you hear about parents that, you know, when a problem's happening. But, I don't think, I think we as a school committee could better work with our community as a whole to create a positive difference for our students. And I feel like that's when communication comes in and I feel like if we work more with our community, then we can be more transparent and more open as a committee.
Another topic, athletics.
Sure.
It's always the question of, are we nurturing, are we creating student athletes or athletic students?
Are we creating athletic students or ath, or athletes? Um, well, Milford has a fantastic athletic program, it is definitely more than we can ask for. We do have a lot of students who, who use athletics to their advantage, you know, colleges pick them to play for their teams and they get a full ride on college for that. So I think that's a good thing that we can use sports as a teaching tool and as a way for a student to grow and progress. Are we creating athletes or are we creating students or athletes? Um, I think we're doing, you know, maybe a little bit of both.
I'm very impressed with Pete Boucher, cause he came out from the beginning and he said, I have student athletes. Their job is to be students, cause less than one percent of them will make a career out of an athletic position.
And if I'm remembering this correct from high school, to be a student athlete on a team, you have to meet certain criterias, which one of them is that you have to maintain good grades in your school. So, he's absolutely a hundred percent correct about that. You're a student first and athlete second. I'm a student first, a talk show host second, I guess, if I, if I'm using my example of being here at Milford TV after school. So, you know, priorities is definitely important and I'm glad that, that the athletes are having their priorities checked by Pete Boucher. You're, you being a student is for an athlete a second.
Now, the other side is musicians.
Yeah, music is great, we have a fantastic music and arts program.
Tell us, do you know much about it or?
Yeah, sure, so, um, we have a band, we have choruses, we have choruses that go through grades, um, four to high school. We have bands that start from, you know, grade three with violinists and they go all the way up to, you know, full bands in the high school. And, you know, it's a really positive program for a lot of our students and they get a lot of enrichment and a lot of growth and building from it. And I see music and arts at the same level as sports. For some students, music and arts is their sports. For some students, being in a TV studio is their sports. So, you know, these are just opportunities that we are giving our students and every opportunity is a fantastic opportunity to learn. And I think that's what both these are.
You know, it's always fascinating because. You know, it's always fascinating, because when my daughter first picked up the violin.
Yeah.
Ooh, it sounded.
Mmm.
Yeah, it sounded like she was pulling the tail off a small farm animal. But yet, she, she went through the years.
She just grew.
It was amazing when Mr. Moffett would have that combination, where you had the kids from elementary all the way to high school. And when they played, it was unbelievable.
I think we can use the same scenario in sports, you know. In elementary school, you know, if you want to be a baseball player, you start with the T-ball, and, you know, you got the thing on the stick. And then, you know, before you know it, you're just, you know, hitting home runs at the park. So, there is always a growth that has to happen with anything, whether it's music and arts, sports, you know, wanting to be involved in communication and television and all that sort of stuff. There's always a growing path that has to happen. And I'm really proud that the Milford Public Schools can give our students that, that opportunity to grow.
How about the area of art?
Arts. We have a National Art Honor Society. And again, that's, that's a positive for our students. They get to use that label and that, and that, and that prestige to basically get into art schools, get into RISD and other top schools like that.
So, now, an honors program in arts, I mean, I know what the National Honor Society is. How do you get into one in arts?
I gotta tell you, I really don't know. I, I know it exists. I don't know how you get into it, though.
Must be incredibly talented.
Sure.
Kids to, to do that, because.
If you've ever been to the high school, I think if you go past the auditorium into that little catwalk that has the glass windows looking up to the courtyard, you have a bunch of beautiful arts and statues and stuff like that. And I'm pretty sure that is all done by the National Art Honor Society people. And when you look at that, I don't know about you, but I'm blown away by the talent that some of these kids have. I like, wish I could do drawings and paintings and statues like that. I can't do that.
But even when they do the, the plays.
Yeah. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work.
I'm amazed at the talent these kids show.
Yes.
You know, always, I remember my daughter, when she first started out on stage, she was, I think, a rock or a mouse. You know, a little gray thing that sat there.
Okay.
We went, all four performances, you know, the Milford Performing Arts stu, Carol Devendorf's group. We went all four times.
Yeah.
To watch her be a mouse. And then you saw the confidence grow and everything grow.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I gotta believe it helps, like, you doing your talk show.
Yeah. No, honestly, like, 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 you know, a lot of people might laugh at me for this, but I honestly credit, you know, Milford Public Schools, their video production program, Milford TV and my, and my involvement in that as to the reason why I'm sitting here with you today as to why I'm about to graduate from college.
Cool.
Yeah.
Any overall message you want to leave people if they say, should I send my child to the Milford school system?
Overall, I think, you know, I think the Milford Public School system has a lot to offer to families and students alike. I think there's a lot of positives there. We have a great athletic program. We have a great music and arts program. There are plenty of opportunities, like the Hotel Affidale Management Program, video production. Just so many avenues and areas where students can grow and, and, and become better. I think we're doing the central principle of education, which is giving our students the schools they deserve. I think at the end of the day, we're really meeting that, and we're seeing a lot of growth and a lot of success from a lot of our students. So, overall, you know, if you're thinking about that choice, I would really highly recommend that you stay in Milford and, and, and take advantage of all the great things we have to offer at our schools.
So, now, people always want to know about the candidate.
Yeah.
From Milford?
I am from Milford, a lifelong resident. My dad's Rob Sheedy. He's also running for constable. His parents were Rob Sheedy also, who was the former of the highway department for many, many years. And his mother was Roseanne Semino, who, who was a teacher's assistant for many years. And then she was a hostess at the old Spironis, which is now Restaurant Forty-Five. My mom's Jody Erick, Jody Sheedy Erickson. Her parents are Diane Lusher. You know, her brother, what, hosted a dance studio here in town, Fred Lusher, Dance Academy. And her father is Bill Erickson, who started an electrical company here in town. So, really, when you look at me and my history, I am really all Milford.
So, it's all Milford?
It's literally all Milford. You know, my grandparents got here because their grandparents came over and everything else. So, you know, it really is a multi-generational that I have in me of Milford. And because of that, my roots here are deep. And I really don't see, you know.
Well, you've got the first part of being a Milfordian, you know, at least third, third generation Milford.
Yeah.
When you finish college, we'll see if you meet the second criteria, which is you live within two miles of your mother.
I, I think that's doable. Milford's small enough for me to find a house two miles away from her, I think.
I mean, it's really nice to see a family like yours when you have your talk show.
Yeah.
I look out in the audience.
They're there. They're there supporting me. It's awesome. Yeah, you're right.
It's really something to be proud of.
Thank you.
That's the true old Milford, when you look and you see different generations and aunts and uncles and cousins all showing up. Whether they like your show or not, hopefully they do. But whether they do or not, they know they have to be there to support you.
I hope they want to be there, too. But yeah.
Yeah.
They do have to be there, I guess.
Come to that time.
Is that time again, Al?
Our jam from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I think you should vote for me, because I am a lifelong resident in Milford. I am someone I think you can trust to do the right things for our students and our school community. I think I am young, youthful, I'm driven to make a difference. And I'm really passionate about our students' success. Not just once they leave our schools, but where they end up in life. Are they sticking in college? Are they, are they getting a good job? Are they making ends meet? You know, I really care about the student as a whole, not once they're here, they're gone, you know. The whole deal, the whole deal. So, really, you know, I would, you know, hope to be on the school committee to make a difference. I think I'm in a well-positioned to do that now. I think I have the education behind me of, you know, a little bit about town government. You know, I have the knowledge of what the school committee does behind me from my experience of filming them in high school. I have the experience of, you know, some budget and policy setting through, you know, being a town meeting member. And, you know, I feel like the next best thing I'd do for my community after, you know, being a, you know, host here, town meeting member, I think the next best thing to do that, you know, my life is really leading me to is being on school committee. So, for all those really reasons, I really hope that you and some of your audience out there would give me one of your two votes.
And as always, thank you for stepping up and volunteering to help our kids.
Al, thank you for doing your show and giving all the candidates a platform to come on and speak.
And as always, to our six loyal viewers, I'll say it again. Please, I beg you, get to know these candidates. There are many shows that you can tap into. The six loyal viewers on this one, Al Holman's, Kevin Rudden's Town Crier, the Senior Center, the Citizens from Milford. I love the idea that in the high school, they're sponsoring an event for the candidates to talk, get everybody involved. So, please, exercise the most important thing you can do to help your kids besides being involved is picking the right leaders.